Good evening and welcome to tonight's City Council Meeting for the City of Homewood, July 27, 2020. We're going to begin tonight with our invocation and followed by our pledge. And I believe we have Mr. Bo Seacrest, our Senior Revenue Examiner, to lead us on our invocation. Thank you. Please rise.
Prayer. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day, God. We give you thanks for this day and this time that we're here, Father God. Lord, I thank you for our city. Father God, I thank you for our residents that we have here, Father God. Lord, I ask that you continue to strengthen our city, Lord, that you can continue to strengthen and bless and prosper our small businesses, Father God, our large businesses, Lord. Lord, I thank you, God, for how blessed of a city we are. Lord, I ask that you be with us at this time, Lord, as we make decisions, Father God, on the betterment and furtherment and prosperity of our city. God be with each council person, Father God. Be with our mayor. Father God, I ask you, Lord, to just continue to unify us, Lord, strengthen us as we progress and go forward. Lord, I just ask, Lord, that you just continue, Lord, to let your grace and your mercy and your love continue to be showered upon us here at this city. And Lord, I pray for each and every person here, Lord, as they leave this place, God, as they go their separate ways, that they be protected and be safe. Lord, it's in your precious and holy name I pray, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Bo. We'll call tonight's meeting to order and begin with roll call vote. Ms. Melody?
Yes, sir. Mr. Waltney?
Here.
Mr. Thames?
Here.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Here.
Mr. Wolverton?
Here.
Mr. McCluskey?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Wyatt?
Here.
Mrs. Andress?
Here.
Mr. Harden?
Here.
And President Wright?
Here.
So you've got a full house. Everybody's here.
All right, thank you. And we also have a lot of people in attendance. Welcome to everyone and pleased to remind everyone in person and watching that we are still exercising appropriate social distancing and masking. And I will say, it looks like just about everybody here does have a mask on. I actually have mine, too, and anybody gets close by, I will put it on. So thank you all for complying with those requirements as we go through tonight's meeting. We'll begin with our first item, which is approval of the reading of the minutes from July 13, 2020. I will take a motion for approval by Mr. Harden, second by Mr. Waltney. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, so the meeting's stand approved from July 13, 2020. And let me go through board vacancies and appointment updates. First, with regard to Board of Adjustments and Appeals, we actually have, if everybody don't fall out of your chairs, we actually have two appointments and maybe room for more. We're going to, these were closed today with two appointments for you all to consider, Andrew Marlin and someone affectionately known as Oz. Bear, you're going to help pronounce his name for me?
His last name is Amagador.
Thank you very much.
Great job.
And I know these are hard to fill spots with folks with good credentials. And I will just, first, let's take up those two. So I will, I'll just entertain a motion for approval of those two appointments to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals.
So moved. Oh, second.
By Mr. McCluskey, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And we're also going to reopen the balance of seats. We have five others to fill. We're going to balance it with, I mean, we're going to open it up without objection to, until September 14th, to give us a little bit of time. We're told there may be some prospects that some of our new appointees are working on. And so we're going to open that up until September 14th without objection to see if we can make some more headway on the other five vacancies for those spots. Next, we have our BZA at-large appointments. We had interviews last week, and thank you for everyone who was able to participate in that. And needless to say, you guys who have gone through these interviews for just positions A to Z with our city, incredible applicants who were sitting here in front of us applying for these at-large BZA positions. It's just a tribute to our city. We did decide on two to select Stuart Roberts and John Gier. Stuart Roberts is going to serve another term. John Gier will be a new appointment to the BZA at-large position. So if okay, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion for the appointment of those two.
So moved.
By Mr. Wyatt, second by Mr. Higginbotham. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, so Melody, if you will formally let them know about their appointments going forward. Lastly, we have Historical Preservation Ward Two, which was also closed today. And I believe we have an appointment on this position on Ward Two for Mr. Will Womack. Okay, so I will entertain a motion for approval on that.
So moved.
All right, from Mrs. Smith, second by Mr. Higginbotham. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, Mr. Womack stands approved to the Historical Preservation Board for Ward Two. Thank you all. All right, we have one addition to tonight's agenda. It's coming to us 30 seconds before tonight's meeting, 220720. It's a request to limit vehicles at residential properties. This is going to go to our referral agenda for special issues. So with that amendment to tonight's agenda, I will entertain a motion for approval of tonight's agenda as amended by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Harden. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, so the agenda for tonight is approved as amended. And first item on consent agenda, I will entertain a motion for approval of our single item on consent agenda by Mr. McCluskey, second by Mr. Wyatt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, so the consent agenda stands approved. All right, we're going to bring up out of order, because I think we have a crowd here. I think I know what most of you are here for. So we're going to bring up out of order 190720. Let me get to that first, which is a request to approve the mayor's recommendation for our new Homewood Fire Chief. And Mayor, I will turn it over to you for 190720. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President and council members. It's an exciting night for the City of Homewood. Tonight, we have the honor of recommendation for Fire Chief. And I'll just first say that I interviewed five candidates, all of which were internally from the City of Homewood. And we have a lot of good talent here in our city. They certainly serve us well. And many of them are behind me this evening to be here tonight. David Everson, Lori Stoney, Charlie Boyd, Brandon Broadhead, and Nick Hill. All great leaders in their own right. This one's been a little tough, simply because, I guess, of the way that it happened. Most of the time, when you have department head turnovers, it's because someone chose to retire. Unfortunately, that wasn't the case with Chief Bresnan. And he left us way too soon. But he left us with a prepared department, people who could step in and lead at a time when we really needed that. And after the interviews, right after Chief Bresnan's death, I had asked Nick to serve as our interim chief. And I felt like Nick served our city with grace. I felt like he served our city and the men and women of the Homewood Fire Department with a steadfast hand, something that we desperately needed because of Chief Bresnan's death. And he's just done a tremendous job. So it's my responsibility, but it's also my pleasure to offer to you my recommendation as our next Fire Chief, our Battalion Chief, Nick Hill. And we do have some family members present here this evening. They're behind me, and I guess they could stand if they would like. As I call out their names, of course, Nick's wife, Amy, is here with us, his parents, Nick and Olga Hill, his daughter Natalie Parker and her husband, Stephen, brother Craig Hill, couple of sisters, we have Debbie McMurtry and Sonia Purvis and her husband, Dewey. And watching on Zoom from the great state of South Carolina, Nick, or your two daughters, Nicole Matthews and Neely Hill. So, Mr. President, with that, I'll turn the vote over to you.
Wonderful. Well, I tell you what, we can go ahead and maybe do the vote. And maybe, Nick, you can speak to us after that, if you don't mind, sir. If you'd let us go, we'll get the formal part up. So I will, of course, entertain a motion for approval of our new Fire Chief.
So moved.
By Mr. Waltney?
Second.
Second by Ms. Andress. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Sir, welcome. You are unanimously put into place. So, thank you.
So let me just say one thing while, Amy, you were quick, and I see the tears of joy. And that says a lot about you. I'll take just a quick second, if you'll indulge me, Amy, to say, on behalf of all the firefighters, thank you to the spouses and significant others who support what your family members do. It's not an easy job, but we're awfully proud and glad that you support especially our new chief. So congratulations to you. He probably wouldn't be here without you. Good, good. Mr. President, thank you. Chief Hill?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Mayor McBrayer and the City Council for giving me this opportunity. I've been with Homewood for almost 31 years. I love the City of Homewood. I would like to thank my family. I work hard to make sure that we protect the citizens of Homewood and always ready to serve. And finally, I would like to thank all the guys who are here. I couldn't have done it without them. And so I look forward to it, and I'm excited. Thank you for this opportunity.
Chief Hill, thank you so much. Welcome up. Thank you all. And please note, you are not required to withstand an entire City Council meeting. We would never put you through such. So please feel free to exit. We'll give you all a minute or two here. Okay, thank you all for that. Before I move on into tonight's old business agenda, I actually had one additional item to add to our referral agenda. So I'm going to ask you all to approve a further amended agenda for tonight. We're going to add, Melody, I don't know if you know this or not, 230720, which is going to be recommending a parking ordinance to allow public parking at the police station. We're going to ask for this to be referred to Public Works. So that's going to be 230720. So.
And who's it coming from?
It's coming from Bert Thames and Andy Waltney. Yes, sir, Mr. Jones.
Where did 220720?
That went to Special Issues.
That was Special Issues. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, so we, just to repeat, we got 220720, Request to Limit Vehicles at Residential Property, going to Committee Referral for Special Issues. And now we're adding 230720 for parking ordinance to allow public parking at the police station. So with those two additions, I'm asking for a further amendment to tonight's already amended agenda. By Mr. Harden, second by Mr. Wyatt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, so we're good to-
I'm sorry, was that second one going to Public Works or-
Public Works, yes, ma'am. All right, first item in our old business agenda will be 130620, which is a public hearing that was continued from July 13 for consideration of a variance to a 15-foot setback requirement for fence in the second front yard at 1114 Columbiana Road. This is coming to us from the Delk family and Mr. Pew. And so we had this public hearing opened and continued. Before I get to Mr. Pew, maybe to update us, let me ask if there's anyone to speak in favor or against this item. Please come forward. Is there-
Do you want the homeowner? John's here.
Yeah, homeowner, yeah, please.
Yeah, come on up, John.
Okay, yeah, Brian, if we have some, we can bring the pictures up and-
That is the basic fence type. I don't know how well you can see that. It's behind-
All right, yeah. I'll get you to speak in that microphone.
Sure. This is the basic fence type.
We've got thousands of people online who are listening to you, so.
The second image would be, the next one, yes, that is the version. You can see the fence along crest there. The max would be set 80 feet of length. It's probably going to be a lot less than that, depending on the version. And we're still waiting to get a few bids back from builders. So that's been the delay in the process. But that would be the closest, that would be the worst-case scenario as far as length of fence.
All right, and so this is a second front yard. Is that really the-
Yes, sir.
On a corner?
On a corner.
On a corner, gotcha.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, any further questions for our homeowner while he's up here? I know, I think the second front yard's the key fact, but. Okay, Mr. Thames? So the variance is, is it a variance to the setback or to the second, to the fence in the second front yard? The way it reads is for the setback?
It's both.
Okay, I didn't see that. Sure.
The ordinance does allow fence in that second front yard, but it must maintain a 25-foot setback. So that's the reason that's worded that way.
And as we indicated before, there's no backyard, so that's our only opportunity for privacy in our property.
Okay. All right, I think I got it. Any further questions or discussion on it? Mr. Pew?
I'm sorry, yeah, I said 25. I meant 15.
15, no, that's where I was getting confused.
I'm sorry.
I was like, we got it. So there's a setback on the front yard, and then there's another 15, but I got it. So, okay. Any further questions or discussion, guys?
I would move to approve.
All right, we have a motion for approval from Mrs. Smith, second by Mr. McCluskey.
Did you close the public hearing?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I did, too. All right, anyone else who wishes to speak in favor or against this item, please come forward. Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Now, we're going to turn it over to the council for approval, a motion for approval by Mrs. Smith, and a second by Mr. McCluskey, who beat you to it, Mr. Harden. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, so that's going to stand approved. That'll be Resolution 20-95. Ah, okay. This is why we pay you the big bucks, Melody. So, all right, thank you very much. Next item, 070720, which is a public hearing set for July 27th tonight to allow one section of an eight-foot fence to extend to 10 feet in height to create a symmetrical privacy screen from the elementary school carpool line at 322 Grand Avenue. That is an excellent description, coming to us from a Mr. Wallace. And we're going to begin with this item with a report from Special Issues. Mrs. Smith?
Yes, the committee met last week and voted five to zero to approve sending this out without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight in council meeting.
All right, very well. Then we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing. And Brian, you'll probably need to-
Yeah, come out.
-step out to speak to this. Let me, anyone else here for this public hearing to speak in favor or against this item? All right, Brian, if you can keep us, keep us on a wide Zoom there and come join us. Or even better, a picture. And just for the record, to let everyone know, it says coming to from Brian Wallace, who handles our visual technologies for our council meetings. Mr. Wallace?
So our property backs up to Shades Cob Elementary. And part of the issue is that the fence that is there has become pretty eroded and rotten, and we need to replace it. In the process of thinking about replacing it, we wanted to be able to do a couple of things. First, we wanted to be able to add a little bit of privacy. That's the carpool line that runs right in front of it, as well as being able to make it symmetrical. Right now, as you can see, it has a heavy slant to it. Talked to our neighbors. They're totally fine with it. We do not want it to be awkward and stand out, and that is a spot where a lot of people will see it. So if you think it's going to be awkward and stand out, especially in that one section, then we can figure out another way. But to keep it symmetrical, at one end, you're going to end up around six feet, probably a little bit below or above slightly in there. Where it says 10 feet, I don't think we'll reach 10 feet, but that was just to be sure. I think we're going to be more around nine and a half feet for about, it's about seven feet. So about eight feet to a point, and then there's about seven feet there at the end. And it'll probably be around nine and a half feet, 10 feet. We knew, we know that that's the right of way right behind it, but we may plant something, even though it could be torn out, and it could be just to offset such a long point, to be able to make it look a little better.
But the fence is not in the right of way?
No, 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 no.
Okay, gotcha, all right.
No, 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 it would just be- Correct, and just at that one point. Because at that one point, it's going to be excessively low, and it's because our property dips so much. That's the storm drain that's behind it. As I stated, it has, it's a good thing that it is, that it is, that it's done what it does because it channels the water very well. But because it does, it has a very low dip right in there. Now, the other option was to build dirt and to bring in dirt and build that area up. But I don't want to do that because then you start messing with the flow of water in the storm drain area and all of that. So it just seemed better to try to do this.
I know in our previous discussions in committee, you mentioned, and I think those of us who have teenagers specifically, the field at the elementary school, which is right on the other side of that shot, has become a very popular kind of hangout place. And even for families, like on the weekends, there's lots of people out there sunbathing and playing games and hanging out. So I think part of this, as you said in our committee meeting, was that it was a privacy thing, too. You want to make sure that y'all can screen your backyard a little bit from the crowds that are, they're going to be there for school and also just the folks hanging out in the field.
Yep. When COVID-19 happened, that became a very popular place because you couldn't go anywhere else. And it's continued to, which is great. And we love our neighbors, don't get us wrong. We love talking to them, we love seeing them. But if we're going to rebuild and build something back, like I said, the two things were to add a little bit of privacy. Cars parked there for long periods of time during, during school letting in and letting out. So all the fumes come off of it. But then secondly is keeping it straight, like we said. If we, if not, and if you guys don't think that that's going to look right or look good in that area, we can do a step down, which is what we had thought about. We just didn't want to. We wanted to be able to have it symmetrically straight across.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else present wants to speak in favor or against this item? All right, seeing no one, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing.
And I would move to approve unless somebody has questions to ask.
Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, take a motion for approval from Mrs. Smith, second from Mr. Thames. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, so that will stand approved as Resolution, excuse me, 20-97. Thank you. All right, Brian, get back to work. 080720, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of extension to remove inoperable abandoned and stored vehicle, a 1988 Oldsmobile, to be exact, from 701 Grove Street. This is coming to us from Ann Grant Wheel and Scott Cook, our code enforcement officer with our police department. This is a public hearing tonight. I am planning to continue this public hearing without objection. But before doing that, I want to make sure and hear from anyone who may be present to speak in favor or against this item. And so I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor or against this item? Please come forward. Seeing no one, out of the request of the vehicle owner, we're going to continue this to August 10th, at which time I do hope that we can take up appropriate action on this item if the vehicle is not removed, which I will tell you, we all hope that it will be removed before then. But we will take it up in earnest on August 10th without objection. So that, that will be carried over. Next item, 160220, Request for Consideration for Lighting for the 700 block of Windsor Drive. This item coming to us from councilors Andress and Harden. And we'll begin with a report from Finance on this item. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee, Finance Committee, met on July 20th and voted five to zero to recommend approval funding for $118.74 per month for the three lights coming out of the seven cents gas tax fund. So that's a five to zero from Finance.
Wonderful. So five to zero favorable vote out of Finance. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, so that'll be approved, Resolution 20-98. Next item, 030720, which is a request to consider amendments to fiscal year 2019, 2020 budgets. This item coming to us from Robert Burgett, our Finance Director, and our Assistant City Clerk, and Melody Salter, our City Clerk and Assistant Finance Director. We'll begin with this amendment to a budget issue with a report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval of this item. Mr. Thames made the motion. Ms. Higginbotham seconded.
All right, again, coming out of Finance with a favorable five to- All right, again, coming out of Finance with a favorable five to zero vote. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so that'll stand approved as 20-99. Next item is 04-0720, which is a request to consider accepting reimbursement of expenditures related to COVID-19 from the Coronavirus Relief Fund under the CARES Act received on behalf of the City of Homewood by Jefferson County. This item also coming to us from Robert Burgett and Melody Salter. And we'll begin with another report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. This is something we're very excited about from the Finance Committee. We, we had been looking for this in my, in my day job, we're helping a lot of companies navigate through COVID, and cities are no different. We're trying to navigate through, we're having excessive expenditures really happening every day. So we were happy to report, so we, we have, for Homewood, within this fund, it's $1,116,211. So over 1.1 million related to CARES Act, and I'll, I'll also say that our staff has done an exceptional job of keeping track of the COVID expenditure so we can get reimbursement, so this is a dollar-for-dollar reimbursement up, up to that amount I just provided. So in light of that, the Finance Committee voted five to zero to recommend approval of this item pending Mr. Kendrick's review.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. That's coming to us from a favorable vote out of Finance, and really hats off to I assume it's Melody and Robert and some others who have really worked diligently to, I can imagine, the paperwork for federal CARES Act reimbursement can be, I would assume ominous, but with that favorable vote, any further questions or discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so that'll stand approved, Resolution, I guess it's 20-100?
Yes, sir.
All right. Next item, 11-0720, which is a request to authorize the mayor to sign supplemental to original contract for Aldott Project at 18th Street improvements from 28th Avenue to Valley Avenue, including the addition of a right-turn lane on Valley Avenue and 18th Street, which I can just get excited about hearing about that. This item coming to us from Wyatt Pugh with our BEZ Department, and yet another report from Mr. Jones, from Finance.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval of this item.
All right, so five to zero vote out of Finance. Any questions or, yeah, Mr. Kendrick, I'm sorry.
Ms. Salter had prepared the resolution for the budget amendment, and then I have a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign the amended contract, so if you don't mind, if we could have two resolutions.
Two resolutions, so the first one we will, since I author, does it matter which order I do it?
Well, the resolution needs to be appropriate, funds need to be appropriate before you can sign it.
So do the budget amendment and then the contract? All right, so let's be clear in that, so we're going to first ask, Walter, I don't know if I'm, well, I guess we've gotten both approved out of Finance, five to zero vote.
That's right.
Okay, all right, so we're going to take them with two separate votes. First, with regard to the budget amendment, to amend the budget for the improvements, again, from 18th Street to 28th Avenue. With a five to zero vote, any questions or discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so that will be approved, and that will be Resolution 20-101. And then with regard to authorizing the mayor to sign the supplemental to the original contract for this project in this, carrying through this budget amendment, a five to zero vote coming out of Finance. Any questions or discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so that's going to be approved, 20-102. All right, thank you, Mr. Kendrick. 02-0720 is our next item, request for consideration to change the short section of Vulcan Road from one-way back to two-way. This is coming to us from Michael Williams and Greg Cobb with our BEZ Department. And we'll begin, I can't remember if we got a report from Public Safety or not, but if we, if we didn't, I'm going to ask for one now. Mr. McCluskey?
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met and voted five to zero to recommend approval. The motion was made by Councilor Wyatt and seconded by Councilor Thames.
All right, so this is coming to us with a favorable vote out of Public Safety, and this will require a first reading, so we'll begin with that. Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, an ordinance to further relax traffic on a portion of Vulcan Drive and deceive Homewood and provide penalties for the violation thereof. Whereas a portion of Vulcan Road identified by the yellow striping test Exhibit A has been historically been limited to one-way travel in a northerly direction only. And whereas the city council now desires that a portion of Vulcan Road identified Exhibit A shall no longer be one-way, a one-way street, but shall permit two-way travel. And whereas now therefore being ordained by the city council as follows, that any previous ordinance that limited the travel on along that portion of Vulcan Drive identified in Exhibit A in a northerly direction only is specifically repealed. Section two, that by the adoption of this ordinance, every person, firm, or corporation is to find the highway code on along that portion of Vulcan Road between the intersection of Vulcan Road and Oxmoor Road shall be permitted to travel in northerly and a southerly direction, permitting two-way traffic on that portion of Vulcan Road identified in Exhibit A. Section three, that by the adoption of this ordinance, every person, firm, or corporation operating motor vehicle defined in the highway code of the state of Alabama, along the southbound portion of Vulcan Road identified in Exhibit A shall exit the southbound lane at the intersection of Vulcan Road and Oxmoor Road by turning in a right-turn only direction onto Oxmoor Road. Section four, that any violation of this ordinance shall be punished as provided by Section 1-8 of the Code of Ordinances. Section five, the chief of police shall be erect or cause to be erected appropriate lines, markings, or signs along that portion of Vulcan Road identified in Exhibit A is approved in paragraphs above. Section six, that any other ordinance that are in conflict with the provision of this order is specifically repealed. Section seven, the provision of this order shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by the city council, approved by the mayor's otherwise becoming law.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kendrick, and before we, well, I guess I shouldn't say before we take this item up for discussion, but the first item with regard to this is just unanimous consent on this, to avoid a second reading. And so we'll begin with that first item with a roll call vote. Ms. Melody?
Mr. Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
And Mr. Wright?
Yes. All right, so we have unanimous consent approved. Now, we're going to take up the item. So certainly open to council for discussion on this item. Mr. Wyatt, and Mr. Wolverton after that.
I just wanted to let the council know that I received an email and actually a voicemail today, and didn't have time to call them back from Mike Patel, who I think is here, or some of the Patels are here.
Yeah, I think they're back in the back.
Saying that they, that I believe they, they had not been, this has not been discussed with them, and that they didn't know anything about a redevelopment of their property with, in conjunction with this one. So I just wanted to pass that along to the council. They also were concerned about the amount of traffic that this would create, particularly with any future development of their property. So I wanted to pass that along and make sure the council was aware of it, because they did send me that email, and like I said, left me a voicemail about it as well.
Thank you for that, too, and I got the same email, and sorry, gentlemen, I was tied up today, but I'm glad we got that conveyed as a matter of record. Mr. Wolverton?
Yeah, so last week when we discussed it, I could not remember if the property purchase had already happened or not, so I was hoping to clarify that firstly. And then secondly, you know, I think changing anything that's a major thoroughfare like this needs to be thoroughly vetted and looked at. And my understanding is that we have not done, I mean, I would, I would lean towards not just maybe Randy, but possibly, you know, looking into Kinley Horn and utilizing the contract that we have with them to kind of look at this real quick. I think it's a, you know, potential, potential liability for the city if, if, you know, we were to change things there and something were to happen. And I see this intersection, I'm not sure how many of you do, but I see this intersection multiple times a day myself, so as somebody that's out there, I think it's kind of in the peak of the curve and has potential sight distance issues and all sorts of other, other issues. And the concerns from the Patels, I'm not sure how it would change the, the traffic flow, if anything, I would think it would reduce it to their, their particular property, but.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Thames and then Mr. Cobb speak.
Just, just so you know, Mr. Wolverton, Kinley Horn, you know they're doing the citywide study, and this intersection is being looked at, and I think that's due to be returned to us in a month, maybe five, six weeks.
They weren't looking at that, this specific scenario, though.
They were not looking at that scenario, but they've done all the counts, all the turns, they've got some ideas about changes that can be made to that spot specifically, so it's probably not a big deal to have them make a comment to what this would do.
Sure, sure, and that's, yeah, that's what I was hoping, we would get a little more professional.
Seems like a little time delay in this would not be a bad idea. Mr. Cobb?
I was just going to mention that we still have the Oxmoor Road project under design, and it's basically ready, but I'd like to notify Gonzales strength about it if they, if we're going to make that change, to see if it has any effect on the plans we already got for that area.
We've got about 13 moving parts on this thing, so.
Well, that is part of our, you know, it's paid for by the state, so if it affects those plans, we need to know that upfront. I don't think it will, and I just talked to.
Captain, is that correct?
Sutton, I couldn't remember what his rank was. I always want to call him, I want to call him Assistant Chief, you know, anyway, about possibly widening out the radius on the right hand, on a turn out to the right, so it'd make it easier for you to make a right-hand turn and stay in the right lane, so people don't swing wide out into two lanes, which I thought was a very good suggestion, to take that upper radius you see and lay it back like the one on the other side is. So there's a power pole there, but I'm sure we've got enough right of way to pull that curb back some.
Well, it sounds like to me that we really do have a lot of moving parts on this, and we've got a lot of things to work through, and it sounds like a little bit of time, and so, I mean, I don't mind carrying this over, but I don't know exactly how long we got to carry this thing over. And it's not that it's, that it's a never ever possible do this, it is a, we need to look at this thoroughly before we do this. And we've got too many moving parts, really, before we even look at it thoroughly, before we can even properly analyze it, it sounds like. Mr. Thames, you want to add to that?
I would just, I think if you carry it over, I think Clark would probably be willing to take a look at it over the course of the week and give us at least, because their idea, obviously, we've got the Oxmoor Project, which is a big capital project potential on the horizon, they're going to return something, I think, that's more, could be accomplished in the short term with striping and paint, and maybe some timing changes on the intersections, so given that he's already done all the studying, we can shoot this over to him, and I'd be willing to bet he'd give us at least a short recommendation.
All right, well, I'll tell you what, we'll, we'll carry it over without objection, and see what we come back with next meeting, and if we make progress one way or the other, we can decide then. Mr. Jones?
Well, Mr. President, typically, with anything like this, the appropriate, I mean, we would not, we would just have our first read. I mean, this, this is really our first reading, and we're not really carrying it over, we're just following the policy and not asking, not granting unanimous consent.
Well, we already did.
I know, that's, that's what, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, meaning, 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 and the normal course, we'd be, so you're making every, we're all feeling better about it, so I got you.
Okay, so I guess you can carry it over without objection.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll carry it over, we won't have to do the second reading per se, but we're going to carry it over and then the last.
And Mr. Wright, I'm sorry, I didn't get who made the first and second only unanimous consent. Do you, do you know?
I'm sorry?
Who? I didn't get who made the first and the second only unanimous consent call.
Oh, I am so sorry. Then I'll tell you what, maybe we should rein, maybe we should reinvent the unanimous consent.
I mean, we could listen to the video if they did.
No, no, I'm, we may, I may have just tossed it into unanimous consent. Thank you all, thank you, Melody, for catching that.
I had the vote, that everybody was for it, I just didn't have the first and second.
Okay.
But I may have missed it, I can listen to the video.
Well, I'll tell you what, Walter, you're such a profound gentleman. Why don't we just carry it over to next week, we'll do our second reading. We won't worry about, we didn't have a motion or a second, we'll take it up Walter Jones-style next council meeting. And then hopefully we can have an update on where we stand, on whether we're in a good position to move forward one way or the other in this item then, okay?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Harden and then Mr. Wolverton?
The gentleman who's potentially buying the property, could you give, you may have to come up here, but give us a timing of what your schedule is, the man in the green shirt? Yeah, I know you're working for the buyer.
If I could while he's walking up here. I, this does remind me of a different gas station that was undergoing a remodel off of Lake Shore in Greensprings about two years ago, and they wanted to change some ingress egress. It, it didn't happen, but they were still able to move forward with the project, so I just want to clarify that for the record, that, that we've had similar issues before.
I can't hardly breathe, I can't talk. Anyway, I'm, I didn't. It's over here. Don't let it bite me.
Thank you.
I didn't quite hear your objection. Not actually an injection, but.
Sure, I, I just have concerns about changing to a kind of an egress point at the apex of a, of a corner turn where, you know, speed limit is 35, I believe, and there's usually traffic that probably exceeds that. So that, that's my primary concern. I mean, it's an intersection that's been one-way for decades, 30, 40 years.
About 20 years.
20 years, okay. It's still been decades, but I, I just have concerns without fully vetting it and looking at it from a, from a professional traffic standpoint, just kind of arbitrarily, you know, a stop sign is one thing, but, you know, changing, changing an ingress point onto a major thoroughfare right there, I just have concerns about it. I see it every single day.
Yeah, we are closing a access point that's a lot closer to the intersection.
Correct, but it's further, it's further back and has better line of sight from, from where it is. It's clo, it's closer to a straightaway instead of where the road hooks and turns.
Do we have that photo that we had up there last week?
That, that one doesn't show the real corner that, you know, that comes there. That's a little bit better.
Okay.
I, I just think we should look at it, that's, you know.
Okay, and I know last week we were going to measure the distance, and I think they did that, and found out that we were better off with that second one, but I don't know that, I haven't seen any record of that. So, I mean, I, and I'm, I'm the consultant for the purchaser, so I, I don't have a, a lot of say-so, except, you know, I know that we'll get it engineered to the satisfaction of Greg and Mr. Pugh.
And just to clarify, has the property already been purchased?
No, pending being able to do this is one of the things that the purchase is pending.
I guess I would, if, if something were to happen, I would be concerned that we just changed a roadway for, you know, for no reason if, if the purchase was to fall through or that kind of thing.
I mean, we've already got a plan for this piece of property, but it does pin changing Vulcan Road into a two-way like it was 20 years ago. Because, I mean, I had come in and out on that road several times when it was two-way, and never was really, couldn't figure out why they did change it except for the.
I wasn't a part of it either.
Yeah, except for the traffic that shouldn't have been coming out of there, but anyway, so.
Mr. Kendrick?
I just didn't know if the Patels wanted to speak to it since they had come, but that's, it's up to them.
Are you guys done today?
All right.
All right. Just a brief, as you guys are aware, we weren't aware of the, of the development or the proposal for the two-way street. First off, I will say, we are for the development of that gas station. We absolutely want it to be redeveloped. We're happy for that, that happened. We are opposing the two-way for a number of reasons. Apologize, you probably can't hear me with this mask on. First off, we drive that road almost every day. We've been there for 11-plus years and when people take that right turn over there, it's fast. When people come down that hill, they come down pretty fast. The biggest concerns that we have is if you make that into a two-way street, you're going to have, you're going to have drivers come down that hill, they're going to opt to avoid the red light and go down that street and try to take a right turn at, on Oxmoor. And you guys are already develop, you know, redoing the Oxmoor Road over there. It's just going to cause issues there because you're going to have people trying to take a right turn into Vulcan and then you're going to have people trying to get out onto Oxmoor. It's very, very narrow. It's not wide. I know the gentleman said that at one point it was a two-way, but I can almost guarantee you that when it was a two-way, there's nowhere near the traffic than as it is today. There's a lot of traffic there. The other concern is if they have customers coming into the gas station, the way they have it proposed, and they're, they're trying to exit out of that gas station, if you've got a lot of cars there trying to get on Oxmoor and they can't get on because that red light is green, so when there's a heavy flow of traffic on Oxmoor, you're going to have a problem with these cars just lined up over there. You're going to have their customers in the gas station trying to get onto Vulcan to get back out. Nothing but congestion, okay? And that's a concern for us because at some point in the future, as you guys are aware, we're planning to redevelop our site. And that's going to cause even more traffic. So that's a big problem. Again, we're happy that the gas station is being redeveloped. That's a positive step for the area that needs it. But that two-way street is a bad idea.
All right. Thanks very much.
Can I ask you something?
Sure.
If they could pick up some width on that, you know, there's that grass area and I, I assume the city controls that. I don't really actually know. But if we could pick up some width there, along there, would that solve some of the problem? One of the things we were talking about was putting a concrete barrier, I'll call it there, just so that you had to make a right turn. We were concerned about someone trying to make a left turn out of there and what a mess that would be. And so we were trying to make sure it was a right-in, right-out only. But could you come up there and pick up some extra property and widen that road? Would that help that process right there of, of, you know, because if someone's got to come down Vulcan to take a right, you know, maybe it is easier than turning and staying on whatever that street is, that, that Jim and Nick's to turn right where the light is. But it seems, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I, I think my gut is they're going to come out of your property and that property and they'll be the main people. But you may, you, you guys know better than I do, you're there. Are people going to be coming down if they want to go west on Oxmoor? Are they going to use this street? Is that your idea?
Yes, absolutely. And to avoid the light and that's going to cause more congestion that way. And then again, as you were stating, if you were to hang over that median right there and cross over, now you've just obstructed from people to be able to take a right turn into there because of people trying to get their way out. Because there's going to be a high traffic flow going westbound and it's going to, it's going to keep increasing the congestion by doing that.
All right.
Whether that, the prices, the gas prices, that median, if people be hanging over and pretty much waiting on their, not really supposed to be crossing over, but if it's not a busy area in their eyes, they're just going to hang over. And then people are going to be flying down here and it's just, and when they do take a right turn, that's going to block them, whether it's, you know, a large truck.
You're saying people will come out, take, take the northbound lane and sit in that as they're trying to turn left to come out, I think is what you're saying?
Yeah, I think that's what he said.
Okay. I think, I think getting, getting the traffic engineered.
And it is, even right there, if you were to, you know, come down and take a right turn, it is a little bit of a blind spot in considering that people, I believe Mr. Ward had mentioned that people are just flying down there. They definitely do have. Especially coming, going downhill from the ramp, the exit.
There's some shrubs, I think, on your property that are pretty grown up too, that, that help obstruct that line of sight too. So do we, do we, do we move on this? Like, do we have to?
No, we're not going to move on. We're going to do the second reading next week.
Okay.
And then we'll take it up.
Perfect.
Any further questions or discussion? Thank you all. Thank you all. So in two weeks, we'll be back up for it. All right. So we'll, we got the first reading approved and we'll get the second reading properly approved at our next meeting in two weeks.
And then Mr. Wright, can I ask you a question?
Yes, Ms. Andrews.
Are we going to hear from an engineer at that point in time?
Yeah, Mr. Thames is going to help us with some additional information.
All right.
All right. Thank you. So our next item is going to be our committee referral agenda, which has been amended. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the committee referral agenda as amended by Mr. Thames, second by Mr. McCluskey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Any opposed?
All right. So the committee referral agenda is amended, I'm just, is approved as amended. That gets us to, to other new business. 140720, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Capital ATMs to install and service ATMs at no, or an ATM, I should say, at no cost to the city. At the, this is actually going to be at the new public safety building. Melody, I don't know if you, I can speak to it a little bit. This is actually a need for an ATM machine at our new courts building. There is a spot for it in an out-of-the-way location. This is at no cost to the city. And this is, as Mr. Morgan explained, is solely for the convenience of our customers. So, Mr. Jones?
Mr. President? I did want to ask, what, what networks this ATM is part of and what would be a charge if someone wanted to withdraw money to pay a fine or something?
That I do not know.
I'd like to know the network, so.
Then Mr. Morgan will have to be the one to speak to that, and unfortunately, he is not here. So.
So I assume there's a charge if you're at a network or, I don't know.
I have no idea. I, I was just told it was no charge, no cost to the city.
There's, there's not a charge to the city, but I don't know what the charge is to.
To the customer.
I can, I can text you real quick and ask you because we.
Okay.
Want to do that? Maybe we'll carry over, see if we get an answer for that.
I'm, I'm fine approving it. I mean, I'm sure they, they've vetted that out, but I've never heard of Capital, unless it's Capital.
Capital ATMs?
But, I mean, I, I.
I actually used to have an ATM through them. They're all, I mean, they're all very similar. It'll be some sharing, some revenue sharing on the fee to use it.
They have one at the barber shop.
Yeah.
Are they sharing revenue with us?
I don't know. I'll assume.
No, there's no revenue sharing, there's no fees. If we, if, if we established our own, like that was going to be an ordeal too, to do our own, like you have to fund it and that kind of thing with, with an account. This is, this is a service that they do. There's no charge to us that the people that use the ATM are paying the fee.
So, so no cost to us, but no revenue to us either?
No revenue sharing, yeah.
So, so. Whether good, bad, or indifferent. That's what we have before us.
I have one more question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Jones.
So it's, so is this a time-sensitive item? Is that why it went to new, new business? Because I mean.
I, I don't know. Melody and Mr. Morgan indicate that. We do know we're in the public safety building and the courts are already up there operating, but they're operating without ATMs now.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to send it to committee, you can. He asked, he'd been trying to find, find a solution for a while because, you know, the courts pretty much only had the option to pay with cash and then he started taking credit cards, but there's been issues with credit cards and time differences and whatnot. So he was trying to have a easier access for people to need to pay cash on court nights. So we, we kind of had a while trying to find something that would be without us having to manage and fund, you know, like you, like I said, if you do it yourself, you have to fund an account and put the money in. So, you know, is there, is there definitely a time need? No, I mean, we could send it to committee.
And I'd be happy to send it to committee, Mr. Jones, if you'd like, and we can look at it and maybe there's a revenue sharing leverage we can, something, I don't know.
He had one, he had, I don't know if it was this one, but there was a, at another city he worked at the court, they had one. And so he was, when I were telling him what it would take to do one if we do one where we bank, he was like, no, there's people that do this as a fee. And so we went and found one, like you said, at the, another business here in Soho that has, that uses this machine, that uses this company.
Mr. Walton?
Do we, does anyone know, do we have one at the existing jail or court?
We do not.
No, it's, okay. Thank you.
It's cash on, it was only, they only had cash and then they take credit cards.
This would be a new feature for our customers. I'm using, I'm using Mr. Morgan's terms. So, all right. I'll tell you what, guys, if you all, there seems to be some, enough questions about this. We'll send it down to committee without objection. Yeah, I was going to send it to finance. Send it to Mr. Jones committee so he can ask himself all the questions he needs to.
I'll ask him for you.
No, I appreciate it, Walter. Really do. So without objection, we'll send this.
We'll ask the guy from the, I've got his card here, Mr. Kendrick, but we'll ask him and then Mr. Morgan.
And Mr. Morgan, and we'll, and we'll just do this with a little more information on the front end. All right. So without objection, we'll send 140720 to committee and finance. Next item, 150720, request for consideration of an ordinance providing for the appointment and notification and compensation of officers, poll workers, for the 2020 general municipal election and if necessary, the 2020 runoff municipal election that's coming to us from our city clerk and mayor Scott McBrayer. And we will have a first reading on this. Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir. Solicitors provide for the appointment and notification and compensation of officers. They hold a regular municipal election call for August 25th, 2020, and a runoff election to be held if necessary for October the 6th, 2020. Be advised by the city council as follows. pursuant to Alabama Code 6114624 and 114627, the following persons being our hereby appointed as officers to hold the regular municipal election call for August 25th and a runoff election if necessary. It goes through each ward and points the election officials as, as an inspector, a registration list clerk, a poll clerk, a ballot clerk, and two assistant clerks for each machine of the two machines at each polling places. So it sets out the names of those persons for each voting place in the five wards for the city of Homewood. Section 2, the mayor's authorized and directed to publish or cause to be published a list of the election officials appointed as above for each voting place within the city and to give notice to the same by, as required by law. Section 3, the mayor shall notify each of the officers by service of a notice served by the chief of police. Section 4, the mayor and clerk authorized and directed to pay or cause to be paid from the general fund, the fees set out in acts of the legislature for the state of Alabama for elections held in Jefferson County. Section 5, that the mayor and clerk be authorized and directed to hold a school of instruction for officers appointed to conduct the regular municipal election and to give notice of the instruction with it more than 48 hours before that school is held. Section 6, that the chief of police pursuant to section 114628 of the code of Alabama shall preserve good order at the municipal election. Section 7, that the provisions of this order shall become effective meagre upon adoption by the city council, approved by the mayor's otherwise becoming law.
Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion for approval of unanimous consent, second by Mrs. Smith, second by Mr. McCluskey. And now properly, a roll call vote, Ms. Melody.
Mr. Walton?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McKibbenbottom?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andreas?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
And Mr. Wright?
Yes. And this will be ordinance 2776. Stands approved. Thank you all. Next item, the envy of all of us. This is what we call, oh, I, I'll just try to, I'll try to bite my lip up here. Okay. 160720, congratulations to these next three. A resolution of election without opposition for Mr. Alex Wyatt as council president, my successor. And boy, we'll make him suffer until we get there. And this is coming to us from our city clerk because Mr. Wyatt did not have opposition. We'll roll into the new president.
I didn't think so. He thought I was going to, but I did, Gaby.
What happens if the resolution fails? Hold it, hold it. Mr. Thames, you're out of order right now. Everybody calm down, okay? This is one at a time, okay? And I was trying to say nice things about him, but.
It's difficult to do.
But we jumped on the lever, yes.
Completely, completely cut off. But no, congratulations and you will roll into office November 1st, as I understand. So get yourself ready.
Exactly.
And so with that, we do have an item before us.
I would like to.
I will say, is there any, well, hold on just a second. Is there any questions or discussion?
I was about to say, what happens then? Anybody? Anybody?
By the way, I didn't want to visit that question, but I didn't want to think about that, so.
At the very least, Mr. Chairman, I think the prudent thing to do is to refer it to committee for more study.
I would like to proudly.
Okay.
Make the motion to approve Alex's election without opposition.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. A motion for approval, second by Mr. Thames, who's trying to redeem himself now. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And by golly, it is unanimous somehow, Mr. Wyatt. Congratulations and condolences all at the same time, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for stepping up, sir. 170720, a resolution for election without opposition for another one, picture of disdain, Mr. Walton for place one without opposition. And sir, congratulations to you as well. Any questions or discussion regarding this item?
You don't like the message?
I would move to approve.
Okay. We have a motion for approval by Mr. Thames and a second from Mr. McCluskey. No further comments from the peanut gallery. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And Mr. Walton, congratulations to you for a second term, sir.
Thank you. I just wish you'd let me give my speech.
You're going to have to save that for another day, but my, my guess is you will get an opportunity. And lastly, but not leastly, oh, can I say that? 180720, a resolution for election without opposition of one and only Jennifer Andreas for Ward 5. Hold on just a second.
Come on.
Mr. Harden, I know she's helping you with your election, but you got to hold on just a second, okay?
She's helping me a lot.
Okay.
For a lot of things.
Any comments or questions regarding this item? I'd entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
By Mr. Harden now and a second by Mr. Walton. Any further questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And by golly, it's unanimous for you, Jennifer, some way, somehow. And what a treasure you have been to this city council, young lady. So I'll call you young lady. You're younger than I, so I get to say that. Congratulations to you and so happy for you to serve another term as well. So thank you. All right. Next item is 200720, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of July 14, 2020 through July 27, 2020, coming to us from our finance.
You don't make the motions? I would move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion for approval by Mr. Thames, and a second from Mr. McCluskey. No further comments from the peanut gallery. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And Mr. Gualtney, congratulations to you for a second term, sir.
Thank you. I just wish you'd let me give my speech.
That's, you're gonna have to save that for another day, but my guess, my guess is you will get an opportunity. Um, and lastly, but not leastly, oh, how can I say that? 180720, a resolution for election without opposition of one and only Jennifer Andrews for Ward Five. Hold on just a second.
Come on.
Mr. Harden?
Where's they?
I know she's helping you with your election, but you gotta hold on just a second, okay?
She's helping me a lot.
Okay.
For a lot of things.
Any comments or questions, um, regarding this item? I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
By Mr. Harden now, and a second by Mr. Gualtney. Any further questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And by golly, it's unanimous for you, Jennifer, some way, somehow. And what a treasure you have been to this city council, young lady. So, I'll call you young lady. You're younger than I, so I get to say that. Um, congratulations to you, and so happy for you to serve another term as well. So, thank you. All right. Next item is 200720, um, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of July 14, 2020 through July 27, 2020, coming to us from our finance director and city clerks. And, is it, Mr. Thames? Thank you, sir.
Uh, yes, sir. Just to follow up on what Counselor Jones was mentioning, after we started talking about the PPP reimbursement from the CARES Act, I started noting what we're spending on PPP, and that's gonna be a great help to our city because it's not been cheap. There were several invoices in there. Uh, one caught my eye, particularly for the, uh, fire department. I believe it was close to 20, $25,000 for some PPE. So, uh, that'll be very helpful. Um, other than a matter of $2.22 that we got corrected, I would recommend approval of vouchers.
Thank you, sir. Uh, so approval, uh, coming from Mr. Thames, second by Mr. Hickenbotham. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So the vouchers are approved through July 27, 2020. All right. That gets us to announcements, and we'll begin with.
No, there's one more item.
Oh, I am so sorry. I completely danced.
I also don't forget the projections that we do have to have the one on September 1st.
Hold it. Hold it. Which, which item? No, these.
210720, request to consider changing the second council meeting, uh, in August from the 24th to the 31st due to the municipal election on August 25th. This is coming to
us again from our finance directors and city clerks. And let me explain also, as Melody just referenced, um, this will be coming after our elections, and it will be September 1st, correct?
No.
The elections are 25th, but we have the campaign.
September 1st is yes on a, uh, date. We have to have a noon special meeting for approval of the elections, Mr. Jones. So that's, that will be a, I just wanted to let everybody know that it's gonna be a little back-to-back, but it'll just be a little noon, and it usually lasts, uh, just a few minutes. So, but, that item's not technically before, so I just wanna let everybody know. So 24th, uh, to the 31st. Any questions or discussion on that? I will entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second by Mr. Gualtney, second by Mr. McCluskey. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So that will stand approved as, I think it's 103, is that right?
107.
Oh, I skipped over all the, yes, our lovely candidate, it's 107. So 20-107, resolution is approved. All right. Now that'll get us to our end of our agenda and announcements. Mr. Mayor.
I'll make it quick, but thanks, uh, to all of you for what you did for Chief Hill and his family this evening. Um, congratulations, Jennifer, Alex, Andy. Congratulations. Um, and I, on Saturday, I, um, we had a huge event downtown with the sidewalk sale. I don't know how many, much in sales they did actually, but there was a lot of people there. Uh, so hopefully that's been a boost to our downtown merchants. And then, uh, lastly, Steve Botch, who's in our IT department, uh, Steve's mom passed away. So if you'll remember, Steve and his family and your prayers, her service is gonna be on Wednesday at 11:00, visitation an hour before, and they'll be conducted at our, uh, Ride Out Southern Heritage in Pelham. So, uh, if you have a chance, next time you see, uh, Steve, let him know that you're thinking about him. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Gualtney?
Is it time for that speech now?
The floor is yours, sir.
Thanks. I actually don't have anything this evening.
Congratulations to you again.
Oh, thank you. That's right.
Oh, so we do need public works, okay.
Um, 30 minutes. 30 minutes. So I will set public works for 5:30. Thank you, Counselor Thames, for reminding me.
Thank you, sir.
You're distracted. All right, Mr. Thames?
Uh, congratulations to Jennifer and Alex and Andy. That's exciting, especially Andy. Couldn't ask for a better partner on the council. So, good for you.
Enthusiasm is overwhelming.
Talk about being distracted. I assume we have nothing in P and D, sir?
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I expect you to instill the appropriate amount of abuse on your wardmate in the coming months or the coming weeks. All right, uh, Mr. Hickenbotham?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Wolverton?
I don't think I'm gonna get used to this mic, but, um, just a, just a quick one. And I think many of you probably saw this, but my grandfather just retired. Uh, he will be 95 next week. Um, it was kind of a forced retirement due to COVID. Um, he's not gonna be allowed back on campus as somebody who is clearly high-risk. Um, so it completes almost a, well, potentially completes almost a 70-year career. Um, and he's been teaching at Mississippi State for over 40 years. Um, so they had moved several places and settled there, and, um, you know, he's a, he's a great guy. I'm very fortunate to have him as a grandfather and a mentor and somebody to look up to. Um, he, he's the kindest man that I've ever, ever met, and, uh, it's, it's funny because it's a small world, and we've met people that took his Latin class back 20 years ago, 30 years ago, that live here in Homewood. So, um, he's just a neat guy, and I just wanted to, you know, recognize him for, for his accomplishments, so. And I hope that I can, uh, be as active and busy as he is at the age of 95. Um, he is writing his autobiography now that he is retired, so.
Got you. Thank you, sir. Um, next, Mr. McCluskey. Yes, thank you. Um, Mr. Gualtney, how long do you think you'll need?
I was thinking 15 minutes. Nothing before this, 15.
15?
Yes.
Okay. So I will call public safety for 5:45. Um, and congratulations to, uh, Chief Nick Hill, and of course to, uh, to Jennifer, Andy, and Alex as well. And, uh, I agree with the, the mayor, there was a, a great turnout in, in the sidewalk sale in downtown Homewood this past Saturday, and, um, you know, hoping that all the support we're continuing to give, uh, our small businesses here is, is becoming real beneficial for them, so just keep doing it. That's it. All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Jones?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. President. Um, the, uh, I just thought it was very fitting with all the, we've had lots of negative things and sad things happen in life that, you know, tonight we had Chief Hill, uh, get voted in, and I just thought that was such a positive thing for the city, and I, I appreciate, we need, we need more of that in the future. And so that, that was very, very fitting. Uh, so I, I really appreciate the mayor, uh, handling that. Um, and then, uh, finance will be at, at 5 o'clock, uh, and I believe that's, that's all that I have tonight.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Wyatt?
No.
Oh.
Good try, Doc.
Ladies and gentlemen.
I know, it's hard, 'cause I'm way down here.
I would've gotten you eventually, but.
Yeah, well, you know, I'm, I'm fine to go whenever. Um, first of all, hail state to Andrew's grandfather. That was so amazing. The picture with him and the president of the university, 95, that is amazing. So I was super excited about that. I did not get to take his Latin class, 'cause I didn't take Latin classes, was what I was about to be saying. Those were way too hard for me. Um, and, um, we'll, I'll set special issues. Did you say 15 minutes, or do you need 30?
Uh, I think, I think I do 15.
Okay, so I can set mine for, so special, special issues at 6. And I just wanna echo what Walter said. I got teary, um, with Chief Hill and, and his wife up here. It's just been, it's been a crazy year so far. So to have something so positive and, and happy to celebrate here tonight was a really, was a really nice thing. Um, and congratulations to our three golden children for, uh, not having to continue to walk in the heat. So, uh, congratulations to all three of them. I'm super excited to, to have all three of them continue to serve, 'cause they're wonderful members of the council.
Great. Thank you. This, uh, this is, Mr. Wyatt?
Yeah, I, you know.
Getting late.
This is, this is what it's gonna be like till November. Um, congratulations to Chief Hill and, uh, to Andy and Jennifer, and, uh, thank you all for all the well wishes. Uh, look forward to another term. Um, and sitting in your chair, Mr. Wright?
Me too.
Oh, I'm gonna miss you. President Wright?
I'll write back at you.
I'm gonna, I can't, the waterworks are gonna be flowing on that last meeting. Um, thanks, everybody, and thanks to Ward Five, uh, my residents, neighbors, constituents, friends. Um, I always wanted to live in Hollywood ever since I moved to Birmingham, and just, we've been there 18 years now, and I love it, and I'm glad to serve another four years. I'm proud and proud to be their counselor. It means the world to me. Um, I also wanna give you an update on my dad. He is virus-free.
Yay.
Uh, he's actually been able to hit tennis balls for, twice now. He said it's not, not pretty, but he's doing it. And, um, he said they have no idea what to tell them. They're like, we don't know what this looks like, what your future looks like. He's like, they think they, he has a little bit of antibodies, he has a little bit of resistance. They don't know how long it's gonna last. I mean, it's just also unknown. Um, and then congrats to Chief Hill. Chief Hill, how about that? Doesn't that sound great? Chief Hill. So, that's it.
Thank you. Congratulations. And Mr. Harden?
Well, I also wanna congratulate Chief Hill, who stepped in a very difficult situation and seemed to do, as the mayor said, a great job of holding the department together in a very tough situation. Um, I also wanna congratulate the three without opposition, for those of us who do have opposition. Um, but, you know, as I've said more than once, it'd be, what would it be like if no one decided to run? So, um, uh, I thank my wardmate. She's great and helpful, and, uh, it's great having her around. The end.
Indeed. Thank you, Mr. Harden. Enough said about these three. Congratulations to all of you. Uh, get to work. Um, and I know the rest of us, uh, the rest of you all will be working as well from your election. So congratulations to your three, seriously, and, um, and that will bring our meeting to an end tonight. Thank you. We're adjourned.